Called on order of the County, Stokes County Board of Commissioners for January the 13th at six o'clock. Sonia, will you have the indication?
Sure will. Dear Heavenly Father, as we come to you today, we'd like to thank you for allowing us to be here today to do the business for the county and take care of some matters here. Lord, we ask for your wisdom and your guidance and direction as we make decisions. And we ask you for safety on the way home tonight. We want to ask that you be with several families in our community who have lost loved ones in the last couple of weeks. Ask you for healing for some people in the hospital that are in our community and for Officer Haran's family and his friends, the Greensboro Police Officer who was killed in line of duty. Lord, we ask for a special blessing on that family too, Lord, and it's in your name that we ask these things. Amen.
(Inaudible) And we have no public comments, correct?
That's correct. Do you mind approving the agenda?
Oh, yeah. Excuse me. I need approval for agenda. Do I have a motion? All in favor? Comments by ladies first, Sonia?
Oh, okay. Thank you. I'd just like to thank everybody for being here and those watching on the live stream. And like I said, we want to do a special remembrance of Officer Haran who was killed in line of duty in Greensboro Police Department and all they're dealing with and all of our first responders who have been working through all this bad weather and our 911 people, fire police, emergency services, fire departments and all that. I know they've been overstressed and everything that goes into an emergency and weather-related things like this, so we just really appreciate all their hard work. And we will say that we have received some calls about the roads and some are getting scraped quicker than others, but overall, I think DOT's done a good job. All the roads getting here from King were good and in good shape and looked pretty good. But I know there's no school tomorrow, another remote day, so maybe we can get these kids back in school soon. But if you do have any questions about your roads getting scraped or whatever, you can refer them to the Stokes DOT because that's who takes care of that. Thank you.
Wayne?
It was good to see everybody like, everybody watching livestream. Sonia whispered, said he was thinking what I was thinking. I said, "Ring your bell." Same thing. Busy weekend for all the fire departments and EMS and I want to thank them. By the grace of the good Lord, we always get it done. So my mother, we always manage to come through for everybody and let's keep those folks in California and their thoughts and prayers as well. I couldn't even find them, what they're going through right now. We had a mountain that burnt 400 acres and I can't imagine what those folks are going through. So prayers and thoughts to all those fire personnel out there that way as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to welcome everybody a Happy New Year or wish everybody a Happy New Year. I think we're all looking forward to doing the county's business in 2025. We've got a lot of moving parts and I'm very optimistic about where we're going to end up at, at the end of the year. I'd also emphasize that keep the people of California and Western North Carolina in your prayers and thoughts. I think especially this California thing really emphasizes the importance of local government and shows what can happen when they don't do their jobs. So a good lesson for all of us to keep in mind. I actually lived in Los Angeles for four years, so I'm just kind of personal. I really know where all those places are they're talking about.
Glad you got it.
I'm glad I did. Before the fire started. The, I got a sheet I handed out for each of the commissioners and it's a little summary of the return on investment for the PTRC, Piedmont Triad Regional Council. And Jeff's got some extra copies if anybody else wants to see one of those or get one of those. I guess the last thing I'd say is January 20th can't get here fast enough and I'm not talking about the football game.
Okay, Brad. I can welcome everybody on the livestream today and I guess a lot of stuff has already been covered, I was going to say, but I'm just real quick. I do want to recognize, we kind of missed it in between meetings, but on the 9th of January, that was Law Enforcement Appreciation Day. It's a national recognition that started in 2015. And I just want to make sure that we don't take our law enforcement for granted, especially here in Stokes County. Officer Haran from Greensboro PD, you know, he lost his life. GPD's kind of had a rough, rough year because Sergeant Nix, who was killed approximately a week and a half later after Haran. So within that time period is when it's supposed, you know, the holidays and it's supposed to be a festive spirit and we got, we got family members that are, you know, going to a funeral of a law enforcement officer that gave his life. And again, as I've always said, it doesn't just impact one generation, this changes the lives of a lot of different generations. And it's another, it's just another indication of what our society is coming to. No one's perfect in any occupation that we do, but to be gunned down the way Sergeant Nix was and Officer Haran was is just another indication that, you know, when you're walking up to a vehicle or even in the last case where it was a suspicious person with a gun, the officer, you know, did things the right way and he paid the ultimate price for that. So again, I ask that you keep the families in the prayers and support local law enforcement especially. And don't take, don't take our law enforcement officers here in Stokes County for granted because if they want to go somewhere, they can go somewhere and make a lot more money than what they're making here. And also, we just want to remember the public safety of the firefighters, especially with the, you know, going over that, what winter we have here. It makes me very grateful to be in Stokes County because we still have a lot of, a lot of community involvement with the volunteer fire departments and with our, with our law enforcement. So I just ask that don't, don't take it for granted. Thank you. That's all I got, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, Brad. I agree with a lot that other commissioners said. We need to thank the good Lord every day that we live in Stokes County. If you don't believe it, turn on the news and watch it a little while and you don't have to, you don't have to look at national news, you can look at state news. We're blessed and my hat's off to all the people who have to get out in this weather, the snow, it's a tough job. Sonia, I appreciate your comments about DOT because my grandfather used to work for them as a kid and I remember him when it snowed, we didn't see him for weeks. They have a tough job and they do the best they can and we have nothing to complain about. Nothing. I would like to thank Joey and his department for getting their app. I went to it a couple of times, it's pretty impressive. Have you checked it out yet, Brad?
It's pretty new, been out about maybe a week. And we're going, our animal control has a new website. Thank them. We're so close for a new site and able to give building permits online. They're going through testing of the software right now, so my hat's off to them. But I want to thank all our county workers, not just those. I appreciate what y'all doing. And with that said, before we move it further, any board member have a conflict with any of the items on the agenda for tonight or one that might be perceived as a conflict of interest?
No.
Ooh, I forgot y'all. Thank you. One night you got something to say.
I've got a couple things to say. I too would like to comment on the storms and the impact on our county and the great way that not only, you know, our staff and our partners around the county reacted to it, but I think our residents and visitors as well. I think everybody kind of took it in stride. Indications that I'm getting are that they're really, I mean, while there were some people sliding off the road, the ditches and stuff like that, there weren't really any serious wrecks or anything out there. So hats off to everybody for reacting to the situation in an appropriate way. And then the other thing I want to comment on is we've got a new member of our team with us here tonight. I want to welcome Tammy Keaton sitting back there in the back row. Tammy is our new finance director. She comes to us from Press Glass in Rockingham County where she was working as their controller. And she's got a lot of great finance background, but among that, including that background, she had about 12 years of progressive experience in county finance in both Rockingham and Guilford County. So we're really excited to have her join our fantastic finance department and looking forward to good things to come in the future.
Great. You got your speech ready, Tammy?
Welcome aboard.
Welcome. Amber, I'm sorry, have you got?
No, that's okay. I don't have a lot, just welcome everybody. Thank you for being here, thank you for watching livestream. Just to echo what everybody said, thank you to DOT first of all, but also public safety for keeping us safe and working hard for us out there. So that's all I have.
Okay. I need a motion for on the consent agenda to approve?
I should approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Discussed agenda, the agenda is Fire Commission and Use of District, Service District Funds Policy Renewal. Scott? Drumroll.
This is the policy that was presented at the last meeting. I think some of you wanted to review it and kind of go over and see if you had any questions about it before we approved it or moved it to action. This document hasn't changed, it's been the same one since 2022, so it just has to be reapproved when we have a new set of commissioners come in.
Has anybody got any comments or questions?
I had some, some questions, some concern on the last meeting, but in the meantime, I was able to do some research, talk with some people, and I'm good with it now. I just wanted to make sure it went through the proper channels with the Fire Chiefs Association, the Rescue Fire Chief and Rescue to make sure that they, that if there was a change, that they concurred with that, but I'm satisfied.
Rick?
I'm good.
You're good? Wayne?
I read back through the old, so I'm good with it.
Yeah, I'm good with it.
And you want this moved to action?
Yes, if you can tonight or it just has to be approved by y'all in the 90 days of the reappointment.
Do we need to approve it now or just move it to action?
We can just move it to action for the next meeting.
Next meeting? I thought you needed sooner than that.
Either one, whatever, I mean, that's what he's, it's doing the 90 days.
Wayne, you got nothing else to do, let's move it to action.
Okay, sure.
Let's get it done.
Next item is Performance Evaluation Tools for the Manager. Brad's up.
doesn't mean we have to, you can, you know, we can, we can put any kind of measurement that we want on the, for the manager to, to be evaluated on. Personally, the one that I think that I felt more comfortable with, I'm not saying that we can't tweak it or anything, is the one that's done by the Way County Manager Performance Evaluation. It lists like, I think it's like seven different ratings. Some of the, some of the actual, some of the actual subtext of it, I think we could maybe delete, but as far as the, where it goes by, the topics of professional knowledge, leadership, communication, and then planning and innovation, managing results and resources, problem solving and decision making, community and staff relations, intergovernmental relations and board relations, I think pretty much covers, at least in terms of my opinion of what an effective county manager would be responsible for.
Any more comments from anybody?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, the, I kind of, I like this one pretty well too and maybe there might be a couple of things out of this other one we could capture along with it if it's not in this one. The question I had was, there's not, we don't have anywhere for narrative, set that back sheet. I guess that'll work okay, but.
You could retype it, well, it'd have to be retyped anyway and just put a comment section after each section.
Yeah, probably needs some, an area to comment for, for each section, I would think, yeah. What's your thoughts on it, Jeff? Did you, what'd you use when, where you just came from? Did you have a good one there?
We used, of course, it's city government, that was city government versus county government, so there's, you know, maybe a need for things to be a little bit different and, but what we used there was essentially the ICMA recommended template for a city manager. And as it turns out, this week, county example is the, also the ICMA recommended solution for a county manager. So I think I'm pretty comfortable with that. I had the same thought that Sonia did about maybe adding a comment section under each group, if you will, but I think this looks, looks pretty good and should work pretty well.
I do too, with that one addition, just so we can write some narrative. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Wayne, anything?
Will this be done on a yearly basis, is it?
Yearly, right.
On a yearly basis?
When's this got to be completed?
I know we had talked about it, but it's like a whirlwind of everything we do, but I know you, we had talked about like when we wanted to start it and finish it and I can't remember what your recommendation was.
I think it makes a lot of sense to tie this, the evaluation to the fiscal year because everything we do kind of revolves around a fiscal year process. But if you're calling, I suggested that sometimes we don't really know what the results of the fiscal year are until a little bit afterwards. So I was thinking maybe September, maybe October timeframe of each year and as it turns out, that would be probably where we would be completing the evaluation. And October or September.
Right.
But when, when's this form need to be? This is the way we're going? No more changes? Or we want to take it all the way up?
I think it goes whatever, if we all can agree with consent it to action and we approve it with the recommendations about the comment sections going down. I think, I think it needs to be approved as soon as possible so that manager's officially knowing how we're evaluating them.
Amber, how much time you need to modify this to come in, add the stuff that we just rolled?
Not much time.
Today?
Next meeting? Yeah. I was going to say, like, right now? I was like.
No, no, no. But.
I'm not that anxious.
Mr. Chair, we won't need the actual comment section till we evaluate them. I mean, so she'll have a little bit of time.
Those are questions or, this is just a question or anything, right?
Yeah, next meeting, I can have it, yeah.
We just, he needs to know the parameters of how he's going to be evaluated.
Rick, is there anything? You said there might be a couple of things on this one.
No, I don't have any specific, I haven't had a chance to go through it that detail, but I thought there might be. If I see anything, I'll bring it to the next meeting.
Yeah.
You just want to hold off then?
I think this is pretty, pretty good, though.
Yeah.
I agree. I think it's pretty thorough.
I thought we put it back for discussion one more time before we get her to finalize it. That way, if there's anything from this that we want to add to this, we'll have at least one more meeting to, I don't think it's that, I think he's got the gist of what we're going to do.
One other question is the, this is different than all the other employees, which is fine. And one of the things we talk, I think I talked to you guys and we may have talked about it as a board, is eventually we're probably going to do some merit pay stuff that'll be tied to these evaluations, so I don't know if that requires, I think yours, you get treated separately from everybody else, but everybody could be eligible for merit pay, so we might need to address something from a policy perspective or whatever about how it would affect merit pay and we could, I guess, do that during our budget discussions too.
Wasn't it in that, our compensation policy we just approved or that you gave to us?
Yeah, you adopted a policy that calls for a merit pay program. And when we had the conversation, at the time we presented that to you, we all recognized that we still need to put in place a formal evaluation process and as it turned out, Amber and Jamie and I were talking about that late last week.
Yeah, the places I've been, there was a merit pay pool and out of that pool of money, then you distribute it to.
That's, that's the way the policy's written.
Yeah.
And so, so then this would just, we'd have to adapt it to this form so we, what you have to get to, how much of money that equals or whatever at some point.
Hundred percent.
Anyway, that can be done later too.
Yeah.
I would just agree, I'd ask how long we're going to wait before we do any type of performance evaluation because I don't know yet, probably four weeks. Kind of hard to evaluate.
He's been here much before you.
Kind of hard to evaluate somebody you just met.
It'll be next, it'll be.
Next year, yeah, next fall.
Yeah, yeah, because this, he just got hired and when was it?
September, yeah.
September, yeah.
You want to say that, that your evaluation will be completed during the month of October every year? That'd give you two meetings to do it.
I think that's fair, yeah.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
No more comments.
We're good. SciTech Board of Trustees appointment and I'll ask Rick to.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Tell everybody in what's come up, what we've come up with.
Yeah, we've had some discussions about trying to find a really good person that would be interested in replacing Commissioner Menon Hall on the SciTech board, so I approached Eddie McGee, which I think everybody knows, knows him really well here, and asked him to consider if he would do it. We all know what his capabilities are and his qualifications to be on a board like that and they are stellar. And so finally, a day or two ago, he said he would do it, so I would ask the board that we appoint Eddie to that open position. There was a question with everything else he's doing, if he had time, and I did some research and I don't know how much time it would take and provided that to him, then he said he would do it, so.
Plus, he was very interested in doing it.
Oh, yeah, he's very interested in, in the, in the subject, especially interested in SciTech and in our local campus here, so I think he will be, be an outstanding board member.
Oh. And a motion on that?
How are we going to do that, Amber? Are we nominating?
Yeah, just like a nominee and that would be good.
Well, I'll nominate him to be the next member of the Board of Trustees for SciTech.
My second.
Any more nominations? Do I need to close nominations?
Please.
Make a motion to close the nomination.
Second.
I think we need to move this to action.
All in favor?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
We need to move it to action tonight or is this one that we need to, has to sit for two weeks and then come back and poll?
It's already been sitting.
It's up to the board. I mean, a lot of other appointments, we do let it sit for two weeks, but this is one we've, you know, we've pushed it from discussion to discussion again tonight, so it's up to, it's already kind of been out there for a month almost, so.
I think they have a meeting coming up, pretty soon.
Coming up too.
Okay, well, let's move it to action.
My question is, is this it? Do we have, do we have to have more than one person on this board?
Well, Kim Greenwood.
We've got two, so.
And we get two, we're allocated two.
Yeah.
Three in my head for somebody.
Okay, we're allocated two.
So we are moving to action tonight?
Yeah.
Our, our last discussion, genotomist Northwest Stokes Fireman Relief Fund Appointment, Amber will present.
So I was contacted by the Northeast Stokes Fire Department about them having a vacancy and in need of a new member on their relief fund board. There are currently five members on the board, two elected by the fire department, two appointed by the Board of Commissioners, and then one appointed by the State Fire Marshal. Their servant in one of the Board of Commissioners slots was Adam Mitchell, but he is no longer with the department, so they need to replace Mr. Mitchell in this role. And so they asked that Mr. Ryan Clark, he's currently the chief there, that he be appointed into this position. And they are asking if we can move it to action tonight as well because they have to certify their roster within the first 15 days of the new year. And I think that from what I recall, Mr. Mitchell has parted ways with the department recently, so I don't think they've had a lot of time from what they portrayed.
I'd make a, I'd make a motion to nominate Ryan Clark.
Second.
Or you can.
Either one's second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That needs to be moved to action.
Yes, if possible.
Make a motion, we move it to action.
Second. Which brings us to the action agenda. First thing I got is Lease Agreement, Lease Agreement Amendment with SciTech Community College Stokes Campus. Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, that action item I got, Fire Commission and Use of Service District Funds Policy Renewal.
I think the, the next one is out of the, the JCPC appointment request.
Motion to approve JCPC.
I didn't term she, though.
Or do I need to say the name?
Um, I'd say it, Stacy Worthington was nominated at the last meeting to serve on the JCPC.
Do I need to poll the board on that?
Yeah, if you will, just poll the board.
Worthington?
Worthington.
Worthington.
Worthington. Thank you. And then that's the next one.
Now I can jump back?
Yeah.
Next action item is Fire Commission Use of Service District Funds Policy Renewal.
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Next item is SciTech Board of Commissioner Eddie McGee, appointment, make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do we need to poll?
That's fine, it just like.
It works.
Yeah, that's fine. All right. It's unanimous.
The last item is Northwest Stokes Fireman Relief Fund Appointment. Oh, Clark, do we need to?
Can you just poll? That's fine. That's how we normally do appointments.
Okay, start to poll.
Clark.
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 Yeah. You're kidding.
No more comments on Thursday?
Look forward to the conversation. Like I said, like we said previously, we originally scheduled two days for this, not knowing what the actual agenda would wind up looking like. I'm pretty confident we'll be done in one day now, depending on how the conversation goes, but.
These people will hold you to that.
You'll have to hold yourself to that.
We do have the second day if we need it, though, right?
We do have the second day and the facility is still reserved for the second day. You'll have to hold yourself to that.
We do have the second day if we need it, though.
We do have the second day and the facility is still reserved for the second day if we need it, so.
Yeah, I mean, probably most of us will go straight from there to Waldo County, so we'll stay a little longer.
We have to. Six thirty, yeah.
You must have used cookie burnt, is that right?
Um, no. Not sure you'd want that.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.